Mm-hmm.
That's a lot, Max. They're all taller now.
Yeah, just for the record, yeah.
Did you say he was coming or he is not?
He's coming.
Okay, okay. Is he not going to tomorrow's?
He was, um, just not sure what the expectation was. By default, like kind of part of it. Yeah, I was like, no, you, I mean, um, he just wanted to make sure he was immediate.
Perfect.
No, because I did say, I'm like, I think the.
I don't think we ever talked about him being like that.
No, we didn't, no. Um, but I was like, when I was telling him, I think the expectation is you're there all the time. He's like, oh, I will be, I'm going for perfect.
That's a lot.
Maxwell?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the Traverse City Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, April fifteenth. I do have a land acknowledgement. We wish to acknowledge the original custodians of the land on which we are gathering, the Ishnabe people. We wish to honor and respect their cult continuing culture and traditions and the contribution they make to the life of our community. Roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner DeTuri?
Here.
Commissioner Heller?
Here.
Commissioner Knapp?
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Here.
Commissioner, so Commissioner Hershey is absent and excused. Commissioner Swanson is absent and excused. And we will wait to see if Commissioners McGilvery and Cameron show up. Oh, here's one.
Maxwell.
Thank you, announcements?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. Just to put on your radar, October twenty-second to twenty-fourth of this fall, we will be having the state planning conference. That'll be in Kalamazoo this year. We'll send out emails on this. I'm reminding you now to block that off on your calendars. If it's something you wish to attend, that is unfortunately typically a Wednesday through Friday commitment. I also wanted to put on your radar that April twenty-third through, sorry, wrong one, April twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-six, Detroit will be holding the national conference. I don't know that's ever been in Michigan since the National Planning Association was formed. It actually was supposed to be in Miami that year, but their Hotel and Convention Center hit construction delays. So they've been looking for a new place to host it, and we'll be hosting it in Detroit. The hall next to where Kobo used to be, or no, it might be in Kobo Hall. Joe Louis got torn down, is that correct? I think so, okay. So that's where it is. We're staying at the Marriott, at the Radisson and all that. So just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. The other thing is, you should be getting your Michigan Association of Planning emails with all their conference and webinars and trainings. Again, if you ever are interested in taking any of those, simply email Katie and let her know. We budget professional development for all the planning commissioners. So if any of those pique your, or capture your interest, please inform us and we'll get you registered.
Are any of the national events up for grabs for us as well, or is it just Matt?
No, the, this national one, that is, since it's in the state, we have budgeted for you all to attend that one.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that is a really, really good conference, too.
And of course, if you're not getting those emails that Sean mentioned, just please let me know.
Um, that's it for announcements, it sounds like?
That's it.
Great. So topics for discussion, we are continuing the short-term rental conversation. I think at this point, we're supposed to hear back from the city commissioners on their conversation. And we have Lauren here tonight, so I'll turn it over to Sean.
Yeah, thank you. Just to give you an update where we are in this process, we've been actively discussing these at the meetings September of two thousand and twenty-four, working through it. It was first identified as a goal last year. We did not wrap it up before the end of the calendar year, which often is the case. So it's continued into this year and was reaffirmed as another annual goal. At this point, we have a public hearing scheduled for May sixth, so that's our next regular meeting. Per the zoning enabling act, the planning commission is not allowed to take a vote until a public hearing is held. At the last meeting, there was a request for additional data. So I want to thank Katie, as well as the Clerk's Office, who handles that licensing, for submitting what they were able to provide based on the data that they collect. So that information has been distributed to you. There was a link that Katie put together, a Google spreadsheet for you all to look at. Other than that, I, at this point, we have landed on, in draft form, revised percentages of the number of dwellings in each building within the allowed districts, which is reduction in every case except for the hotel resort district, which it was decided by the planning commission. That's the intent of the district, no point in reducing it. The greatest reduction is in the industrial district that previously allowed by default a hundred percent of the dwellings in a structure to be rented short-term. And that was really just based on the fact that the industrial district allows some of the commercial district uses. That one is being eliminated as an allowed use at this time, so that would go to zero. With Lauren here, over the last few meetings, there have been a number of questions raised regarding non-conformities, all very good questions. I've been able to come to Lauren, she's given some responses. I've brought it back, that typically generates more questions. So we decided, let's just bring Lauren to the meeting and have that conversation prior to the public hearing. So she's here today to discuss some of the legalities as they relate to non-conforming uses. And I think that's all we have, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, um, well, I did send you a message earlier about the website.
Mm-hmm, that one I sent out today?
Yes. So there are two vacation homes listed in R one B?
Correct.
I thought that was not an allowed use in R one.
So those.
Or in our district.
This predates my time. Speaking with David Weston in our office, those were established uses prior to when the city started regulating and prohibiting in some districts, the short-term rentals. So as I understand it, understood it, those were essentially grandfathered in. I think you were part of some of those conversations.
Yeah, but that's a really dusty corner of my memory.
That's fair.
Actually, when you said that, I was like, really? I don't even remember that, but.
I also don't remember it. Like, I've seen a site like this at one point, and I've just never seen that, those two come up in the R one B. So I just didn't remember it at all either. I don't know where, it doesn't, it doesn't say.
I don't know, we can.
You can click on the R one B, where it says R one B, right below it, and then it will zoom into where they are. So one on Bay Street.
Okay.
And so there are some conditions with that. It's allowed to continue existing. If they sell the property, I believe Dave said they have ninety days for the new owner to transfer, or they lose that use. So those were just some of the anomalies that we, we had in existence.
Got it.
Yep.
Oh, I found it, okay. Eight seventeen Bay. Okay, do we have, I want to try to come up with a nice cohesive way to do this. I liked the data questions that were asked. I liked the responses, I think that was helpful. I do believe that it's too early to try to conclude anything for two thousand and twenty-five. I agree with that. In terms of number three, so how about let's talk about the question three and three B that Jackie asked, and see if there's any consensus to want that data? Because I know that that is a question that the planning director will want the answer to. And then, once we land on something together there, we can kind of just ask questions of Lauren, talk to Lauren about non-conformities, talk about any other things that we might have, that might have come up in reviewing all of this information. Does that sound like an okay plan? Great, cool. I guess, Sean, do you have any more context as to why number three is so challenging to collect the data on? Probably because they have to contact the people that at one point held those licenses, right? At least that's what I was thinking, but maybe that's not the case, and maybe Katie actually has more information.
Yeah, I mean, I can try to answer, I'll let Katie backfill. So that is information that would have to come out of the Clerk's Office. And why it's so difficult is it's not data that they have collected. So it would take a lot of work. I know Katie has talked with the Clerk's Office, as well as Benjamin, and that's where it gets a little dicey. I can't direct another department staff to create data that doesn't exist. And so that's where I think there was that conversation via email about, we'll just have to decide, like, is this pertinent to the decision that needs to be made by the planning commission? If so, that's, if that's a request of this body, I can take it to the city manager. It's ultimately up to them to decide how to allocate those staff resources. So that's, I mean, did you have more to add on it?
Yeah, it's just, um, you know, most of these are owned by people, you know, couples or whatever. Maybe they start it under their name, maybe in the midst of that, they make an LLC. Even that's hard for us to track, you know, of like, an LLC moving to a PO box, but it could be the same owners. Or people might just sell it and then someone else has it. Is that a license that la, that lapsed? Like, the license is tied to the property and the owner. It's not tied to one or the other, so they're not transferable. So, you know, if you had three owners on a property in one calendar year, and they all, you know, which is rare, but you know, if that scenario did happen, then that would be like three ownerships. It's just an interesting thing. So it's like, it's not really a lapse. And then again, if people just don't want to renew it, because maybe they really just rent them out, you know, June, July, August, and have a long-term renter in there, and so they just don't do it until they get back from spring break, they technically didn't renew, it's just.
Yeah.
It's just interesting. And then, you know, maybe Lauren buys a property that someone else had, and they called it, you know, the Cherry Suite, or whatever. And Lauren buys it, and she wants to call it something else. And maybe those people called it Unit One A, and she just calls it One. Like, it's not necessarily, you know, they're units in buildings that, you know, we know how many are supposed to be there, but it's not like they have names that we've, like, the city has given them, or like official names. So it's just a, it's just a little confusing.
The data's not perfect.
Yeah.
That's the issue. There's a lot of variables that can influence how the data's presented, and it, it takes a little nuance and context to kind of understand it.
Jackie's got a question?
Oh, sorry.
No problems. I, I wondered, would it be any easier on everybody to just try to figure out how many of the existing pool of licenses are allowed to lapse each year? I mean, not trying to track ownership, just looking at numbers. Is that, is that simpler, easier? You know, because I, I think the point of it was, was trying to get a sense of turnover and churn. And, you know, we really don't have to attach specific owner information, but I don't know if that makes life easier or not. It, it occurred to me as you were talking, maybe, maybe the most direct thing is to put together a survey monkey and, and email a link to all of the owners of record and, and do a quick poll, you know, if out of the, however, we're closing in on seven hundred licenses now, I guess, for two thousand and twenty-five. Even if we got twenty-five percent response, that would.
And what would that survey ask? What are you saying? Well, like, what, asking them what?
Asking them if they're, if, if they renewed their license this year. I, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking for an easier way that wouldn't involve, you know, a lot of, a lot of manual tracking and judgment and follow-up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that that's a, it's just kind of a Clerk's Office thing. I think that that would have to go through Liz to, you know, discuss with Benjamin, I'm guessing. I, you know, I only know this stuff from having worked in that office, but again, we would all call our things differently and have a different rhythm of to how we, you know, renew our licenses. So again, is it a lapse if they're just not renting it out right now, but then they're going to later? You know what I mean? Like.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. But I think that that's a, that's a Clerk's Office thing.
I guess I'm a little stumped. I, I don't, I guess I can see the benefit of it. I can also see the benefit of, not the benefit, but I can understand not having it. Because by not having it, we also just have the other numbers to work off of. So I can see both sides of it. Commissioner McGilvery?
So I'm not quite sure what the, I don't see the benefit of getting the lapse number, okay? And I'm looking at, you've got so many grandfathered in. I think that's an important number. You've got the maximum allowed per district right now, which is a difficult number to determine based on how it's organized or set up. And then, you know, and then you've got, and if somebody decides their license doesn't lapse, but they're allowed to renew it the following year, has it really lapsed? Because they're allowed to do it. I think you just saw this spike in numbers because we've been talking about putting limits on it. So the lapse, you know, to know how many lapse in the past has not going to have much bearing on how many lapse or don't lapse in the future if they're now grandfathered in. So once you, if you're, if you can, if you're not going to rent it out this year, and you don't have to worry about it, you can get it at any time you decide to rent it out, then no one's in a rush to rent it out, okay? There's no benefit to spend the licensing fee. But if suddenly we restrict it, and now you're grandfathered in, so you've got to, well, then you're not going to be lapsed. So what's happened in the past is not, I see an indicator of what will happen in the future when you change the regulations. And I don't see the benefit of getting that number at this point.
Fair.
I think the question is, again, if we had a better idea of how many are. I have a question that's kind of off this topic, because I'm looking at your short-term rental spreadsheet, and I see these ones on Twelfth Street where someone built six, eight, whatever, or eight or ten individual units that each have their own number. And according to your spreadsheet, by building individual units, each one of those is its own unit, hence is entitled to have a short-term rental. If they were connected, we'd say the maximum would be, out of, say there's twelve there, would be three. But because they're individual, is that just a way to get around it? And that's a big hole in our ordinance if it is, because that's not the intent.
And you mean, connected as in like, the licenses are connected?
Well.
Because they're physically connected structures, I think, right?
I don't, no, they're not, they don't appear to be physically connected. And so my question is, can you just, if you have a, I mean, how do you determine a project? Now, for all I know, those were all grandfathered in, but it doesn't seem to be. They're all, well, they say grandfathered can be a hundred percent, and they're all listed at a hundred percent.
So that was one that did.
What, C two zoning?
Yeah. That was one where the policy did allow for those who have commenced construction to be grandfathered at that point. So in this particular case, when these discussions were taking place in two thousand and twenty, he went real quick and got his contractor to put in his foundations for all the buildings. And if you remember this one, it's across from Cone Drive, it sat kind of fallow for a year. Now granted, COVID happened and construction was stopped and stuff like that, but because he did start construction, he was able to secure his licenses at a hundred percent.
So that's fine, he's grandfathered in, that's not my question. My question is, is it says the potential here is a hundred percent per unit. I, I mean, I'm trying to understand if this spreadsheet is what I'm asking on. So if, if C, I guess, let's say if two hundred and seventeen and two hundred and nineteen gave up their licenses and were no longer, and stopped usage, would they still be entitled to it? Are they still at a hundred percent because they're grandfathered in?
Well.
I guess the question for, my question for Lauren is, when does someone lose that grandfathered in this situation? Does the city have a policy, and I, is it even, is it enforceable? I mean, you can have an idea, but then you have to have a judge determine whether it's true.
I have, honestly, I was told there would be no math, Brian. This, I'd have to look at this one and see how that plays out with the grandfather policy that we did at the time, and try and figure that out. Because I, I would have to spend a little bit of time trying to figure out if it was still grandfathered, if they let one of them lapse, since they all have their own.
So my, my basic question is, how are we counting?
Yeah.
The total number of units on, on a project.
Especially like, the Gillis Streets.
Yeah.
The twelfth streets. There are so many of these that are cropping up together.
Right.
How do we count that?
And yeah, if we have zoning that looks at the number of units, if they're distinct, because a five-foot gap between buildings is substantively different than having those buildings being flush.
Correct.
I mean, they're not, I mean, you can put as many condos as you want on a city lot, you know, if it's, if it's, however it's allowed for, and you do the coverage of it. And I don't know why, can, if you're on one city lot, you know, shouldn't our restrictions be per city lot? Okay, not per.
Per building, yeah.
Not per building or foundation, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a good question. If that's the direction of the planning commission, that language can be changed. Right now, it's written as per building. This one, this is the one on Twelfth Street I put up on the screen there. It is an anomaly. Most time, people build a single building just because it's more cost-effective. I don't, I'm not going to assign motive and say he did it to work around the ordinance, because he was grandfathered a hundred percent either way, so. But yeah, again, if that's the direction of the planning commission, that's something we can change. We would, we would reference as, you know, per parcel, rather. It gets a little tricky, because most of the time, these are site condos, so everyone has a unique tax ID, but we would just talk about the parent parcel that originated.
And then site condos versus, and then two. So then the different site condos.
Yeah, these are like psych condos, is really what it is.
So they each have a tax ID number.
Yeah, so like, if you click on this, oh, this one, yep. So right here, does it show it, it has its address? Yep, so here's the, the tax ID number. Each one should have a unique separate tax ID number, because they're all assessed, but they're from the same parent parcel.
Yeah, and the first three digits are identifying that.
The parent, yep. And that's how we would use, see this one forty? That's, that's referencing the parent, so when you look at each one, it's one forty, oh, eight, one forty. It starts at one, one, two, three, four. And that's the method that assessors use throughout the state. So it kind of gives reference to where those tax IDs came from originally.
Yeah.
Based on the relationship with the parent parcel number.
Personally, I like that. I think that is a huge flaw in our, in adjusting these numbers, if that can still be worked around in that way.
It's a loophole, I mean.
It is a hole.
You know, just by not connecting the buildings. And, you know, it's, whether or not it makes sense financially, it depends. I'd say today, probably not. Five years from now, maybe it will. Just depends on how the industry goes, and every industry, up and down, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, I, it's, it's good to try to identify these loopholes, because if we don't, people will, you know? And then we get back into corners, because it's like, well, you are allowed to do that, even though that isn't the intent. Of course, we always have the ability to amend, and, you know, when we catch them, but if we can catch them on the front end, that always helps.
I have another question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Brian. Let's do, well, let's do Jackie, then Brian.
Just wanted to, to share with everybody that at last night's study session, the government affairs person for Aspire North made an offer to share the data that they have regarding short-term rentals in Traverse City. So I'll be following up on that. And, you know, we may, we may get access to some information that, that we wouldn't have had otherwise, and I'll obviously bring that back here, as well as to the, to the city commission, so for what it's worth.
Thank you. Did you get any sort of other feedback response while you're, while you have the mic? Or not really, it was kind of just very.
There was a lot of conversation between commissioners, but, you know, there were.
Yeah, I'd say the main consensus is, we need more information further forward. And if, at least on the zoning and planning portion of it, there is something that comes from the planning commission, then that can be also a point of the conversation at the city level.
There was, there was some conversation about how do we synchronize or not the actions of the planning commission with the actions of the city commission on police power approach? And I don't know that, I, I think the mayor quite strongly felt that they should be sequential, that she wanted to see this work that we're doing right now before addressing some of the other options for regulation. But we did get agreement that we could make use of Lauren's time to a certain extent to just sort of weed out the things that other communities are doing that simply would not fly within the state of Michigan, and narrow our focus that way. So that's a, another next step.
Yeah, and that's consistent, the mayor called me after the meeting yesterday to talk about that, and that, that aligns with what she was saying. And I think that's a wise decision, is she said, let the planning commission bring what they propose, so we have that context as we think about these regulations. In the meantime, since we have to follow the process with a public hearing and notice, that will give staff, including Lauren, time to vet some of the possibilities that we can then report on at the same time when we bring it to the planning commission, or the city commission.
Sounds good. Thank you for the update. Brian?
So my understanding of the non-conforming policy or your ability to get licensed is that the rule we've established, now, the readings I've done on non-conforming is it's not, it's sort of a, determine something is no longer an active use is a relatively high bar under zoning. But the city's policy is, if you, if it's grandfathered in under zoning, if, if I understand this correctly, if it's grandfathered under, under zoning, they won't, you won't re-license it if it's not, the license is not renewed within ninety days. Is that different than grandfathering? Is that going to be some type of crunch when that actually happens from a legal standpoint?
I think, well, potentially. I mean, it's always, there's always the potential that someone could bring a challenge, right? I think that in the process that we laid out and giving that extra time, and then there's also within the ordinance itself, a process for hearing. And so really, when you're talking about something being grandfathered and something, and taking away a non-conforming use or a property right, the requirement is that you have notice and, you know, due process, which is notice and the opportunity to be heard. So that process is built in there, too, to try and cover that base under due process. You know, whether it would be enough, I, I can't say for certain. It's, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, and judges will do what they'll do. But we've tried to cover those bases and give those opportunities within the ordinance and then within the policy the last time that we, we talked, you know, we kind of had a downzoning of, of this use. And it seemed to work out the last time, so. Yeah, I don't know if that answers your question.
I think that's an important.
It does, thank you.
An important point made is, we as a city have gone through this process before, and we navigated it quite smoothly between the changes that were made in the ordinance, this policy that the city commission adopted to address it. So we would probably aim to replicate how we did that. And I will say, if this does move forward, what we typically do in these situations is we'll mail letters to every licensee to say, hey, this is the changes happened, these are your options, you have this timeframe to respond and act accordingly to preserve your right. With the issue of non-conforming, it gets a little interesting with this particular case, because it's regulated both by zoning and a police power. And zoning ordinances allow for legal non-conformities when they change. You don't have that with police powers. So there's kind of like a weird intersection here between these two that.
Right.
It's going to take some intentionality, but it's, it's doable, I would say.
So the reason I ask the question is because one of the, in my understanding, is one of our intents is to not only kind of cap the number of new, um, new short-term rentals that go into the city, but also to maybe over time. but also to maybe over time, reduce the existing number through attrition. And that's what I'm, why I asked the question. Now, which comes back to that part is the non-conforming, making these grandfathered non-conforming uses. So the city has sort of a mechanism. I'm not sure how the city's going to work that mechanism out when you suddenly tell a building with, you know, uh, you know, with 50 of the 60 units are short-term rentals and now tell them, you're only 25 allowed. And after that, you're non-conforming. You're all, I don't know if you're all now legally non-conforming uses. And, you know, so once someone loses it, until you get down to that 25% or 50% or whatever our number's going to be, that's, I mean, it's a consideration for staff and the city commission. It's, it, but it's, you know, and so if it's a concern of staff or the city attorney or the city commission, we should hear about it now, but I'm still looking for the answer to my question from last meeting. How many non-conforming units are we creating? And can you tell me by zone?
Yeah, so, um, and I, I apologize for missing that question at the last meeting and not including it. We'll dig into that. It, it's going to take a building-by-building analysis. So it may take time. Hopefully, we have it by the public hearing. We have talked about that question you raised, your, your first point. And the way that we would propose to address it is that if you have a building, say with, uh, 12 units in the, the C3, we go down to 25%, they all have short-term rentals. They're all going to be grandfathered in. As long, and we would probably structure the policy like we have in the past that, you know, as long as you don't let that license lapse, you maintain that use and then you can keep operating. All of them can. But I think where you would have that situation, this is where I'll, I'll work through this with Lauren a little bit, is if someone sells it, the intent then is that that new person couldn't get a license. And that's where we have to work out some of those, those preserved vested rights, you know? Because if I bought it for 500,000 because of its potential to rent as a short-term rental, and then I can't sell it, you know, we got to navigate.
Well, because you're losing money or even the value of it. It's still a taking.
And, you know, there's no guarantee that my property will hold its value regardless of short-term rentals and stuff. So, I mean, we would try to find the fairest way to, uh, to address that. And everyone would then most likely be allowed to renew their license. And then if they start to drop down, no one can get a new license until you get below whatever the new percentage is and then they can figure out. And the first one to apply gets it, so.
I'm just, I, I'll be honest, I, my concern is by, uh, when we do this with the city's policy, how you enact this. You're going to create a legal quagmire for a number of, uh, for the city. I just think you're going to get sued.
Well, I mean, we get sued.
People will look at it.
We get sued all the time.
I know, I understand that, but my point is that, you know, as soon as someone goes to sell their property as a short, it's a short-term rental, and they can show that based on the income for that property, not, not every property is a huge moneymaker. But how the, by using, you know, the, you know, the profit of that short-term rental and how it should return a certain value, uh, then, and it no longer returns that value and it's costing me actual money, then it's suddenly, you know, the city's going to add. I'm assuming that's going to lead to, you know, a suit and how the city's going to work that out. And it likely won't be by one individual. It will likely be by a number of them who are bothered by this. Once they realize, you know, once they get that letter from the city. We'll be done and moving on to other things by then, but I'm just, you know, I'm throwing it out there. That's a, you know, that's a concern. And then it's going to be, uh, you know, a mess for these, or maybe not. I don't know how these, all these different condo associations will deal with it. If they allowed it in the past and now, you know, how do you determine, you know, who gets it and who doesn't? And then really, what the question is, when you, if you ever dip below the allowed amount, you know, what happens then? You know, who gets the next one? But there's ways to get around that, so I'm not really overly concerned.
Well, and I, I appreciate the concern expressed. Lauren and I did have the chance to talk about this before. I would say we feel pretty confident in our ability as staff internally to figure out how to navigate that to meet your desire. If the, you know, we'll, we'll figure out the nuts and bolts on our end and limit our liability and stay within the confines of the law because we do this a lot with changing, changes in zoning, so.
Yeah, I, I think if we, if, if the planning commission can come to some sort of a, if you can come to consensus on where you're, you're wanting to go, then we, we can sit down and do the deep dive on how to structure that to make that happen in the, I guess, safest way possible for the city. If we start doing that deep dive and there's no way to do it, we're going to come back with that, with that recommendation. That's not my feeling as I'm sitting here right now, but, you know, it, it could also be that legislation changes or we get a case come down in between that tells us something more and then, and then we would know more. So, you know, it's not just the city that has shifting sands, um, within our own regulations. It's, you know, the state as a whole that can happen as well, so.
I, that is something I was going to say, like, as much as we want to try to avoid things like this, I mean, it's always inevitable. It could, it could crop up out of nowhere on any of the items that we ever pass. Like a rezone even. So I get that we want to show that we have concern and are, are committed to what's fair. And I think, I mean, this is what we get for not having taken action earlier when, when short-term rentals were just coming up. So like, I think it's chicken or the egg, and I think we'll handle it when we get there. I do, and like Lauren said, which is what I was going to mention, is literally at any moment, legislation could come through that says you no longer get to decide at the municipality level. So like, yeah, who, who knows what could happen?
And I think as far as the sequence, we're kind of waiting till the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city commission. That gives us as staff the direction of what. We don't, we haven't spent a lot of time digging through it yet because there's nothing concrete being recommended. So once that happens, in addition, as I mentioned earlier, to the internal vetting of the questions that were raised at the city commission last night, that's when we will work and present, work and draft a policy to present, you know, somewhat tie-barred with this ordinance so that the city commission knows that by approving it, this is how we would implement it. And like Lauren said, if at that time, in that, that practice of creating that ordinance, we find major glaring holes, we're going to bring that up to the city commission so that they know before they take action on it.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, again, we, we need direction from the planning commission, um, and then we'll be able to dive in a lot deeper.
Jackie?
Just, um, one more bit of context from last night's conversation. There did seem to be some interest in the idea of incentivizing conversion from short-term to long-term rentals. And whether, you know, in Arizona, that takes the shape of a cash payment to the owner of a short-term rental license. You know, there are other tools that exist in the state of Michigan that could end up being an incentive to give up an existing license. So I think the carrot versus the stick, uh, approach was, um, had some favorable reactions last night.
Okay. And most of the time, that'll be through something out of our purview. It'll be through police power, but that'll be what you both are recommending because you've heard that that, there's an interest for a little bit of stick, a little bit of carrot, so that way, yeah, that'll get balanced. Yeah, Mitch?
The planning commission cannot write and approve police power ordinances, but we can still identify what those, uh, powers are likely to be and recommend them along with the planning and zoning component that we are passing.
And maybe where?
And so that's, that's where I think the planning commission really comes into play. As we've mentioned before, these incentives that were mentioned last night have to do with, um, affordable housing, you know, and, and meeting that requirement. They do, the law requires that you establish districts where that incentive would be eligible. And that's a land use discussion that the planning commission should chime in on. Now, I had mentioned it previously, as part of the community development block grant program that we're in now, we have to do a fair housing assessment. And so part of that is they will be coming up this summer, we don't have the date yet, and doing a joint meeting with the city commission and planning commission on the Fair Housing Act and how that happens and how that gets implemented. What we are trying to do is also get MISTHA, we have a local MISTHA rep who lives here in town. I've already talked to him. He's willing, if the date works, to come and talk about these programs since we're, we'll be talking about housing at that time, as well as someone from the Michigan Office of Rural Prosperity, who's also a city resident, who has offered to come and talk about some of their agency's programs that we can use to help provide incentives to get the outcomes that we want. It's coming, but, uh, you know, things move slow.
Mitch?
Yes, and kind of getting back to the issue that, I don't know if it's a loophole or not, but it seems like potentially one where separate buildings are regulated different than attached buildings. As somebody that's followed for the past couple legislative sessions, who knows what will get introduced now? When looking at state regulations for short-term rentals, they do have a category that we do not have defined in our zoning, uh, definitions, which is condo hotel, where you can have something, in theory, like the 12th Street properties or like Gillis Street or like Trailside 45, where you've got a bunch of units, um, as part of condo association, whether, whether attached or detached, that are functioning more like hotel rather than a bunch of apartments that are owned rather than rented. So, uh, we could have a definition for that and, that would allow it to be classed out of the whole condo association as far as how many units would be allowed. And that could cover mo- multiple different, um, building types.
And we, we had a conversation since our last meeting at, at the staff level. I would like to, when this comes back to public hearing, have presented to you a revised definition of hotel. We're doing a little work into that because I can see that being exploited as a workaround on this. So that we set some sort of standard definition where you have centralized booking, potentially ownership, management, things like that. It's, we're doing some research right now because hotels do sometimes sell some units and then they manage them. So, you know, if you say it all has to be under central ownership, that may exclude some hotels. We're not seeing a lot of that in the city, East Bay Township. We're starting to see some of that there, but those have been longstanding hotels and sometimes selling them is a way to get revenue and, and things like that, so.
Yeah, just depending on how that hotel is operating, it might be sensible for them to be listing some rooms on a short-term rental website.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the thing too, is a lot of hotels do advertise their bookings on because they know people are looking on those sites, so they want to have their product visually seen as well. So we'll work on that. You know, Brian mentioned a point too about the HOAs. It will be interesting because, uh, if we reduce these percentages, uh, that's going to create non-conformities. The HOAs may move to say, you know what, we are going to, you know, prohibit them in our own bylaws because by having non-conformities, it now becomes a lot more difficult to finance, do investment, repairs. So the HOA there themselves may decide to self-regulate and further limit it. You know, there's a financial.
They have done.
No, there are, there are many have, straight up.
Generally, they do it in upfront. Once you get past the 50% short-term rental, it never.
Because you're not getting enough votes to change your bylaws from the owners, yeah.
People have tried it in those, in condos. Basically, once you get past 50% being used for short-term rentals, there's no going back.
But, and I think you're, you're probably really accurate on that. The one difference, and I don't know that it will be effective, is the non-conformity coming into play. Because right now, that's not the case, so it's really like, well, we don't want to limit it. But if they're, if they find themselves unable to get financing to do improvements, because we get calls from banks and stuff all the time wanting to know the status of non-conforming uses and what they can do before they refinance them and stuff. So I can't say it's going to play out, but just hearing you say that kind of piqued my interest.
It makes it more, not, any times a non-conforming use in a sale, it's more difficult, but it's not impossible.
For sure.
And a lot of these condo associations, they just special assess people if they need major investments, repairs. You know, and I've seen them in the condo hotels where do, they did a, you know, $50,000 special assessment spread over three years, just because, you know, they had let things, you know.
That happened, it's like, we had owned a condo and, yeah, we had $50,000 assessed over three years because we had to replace our fire escapes, you know, and that's just how they, they did it.
We could also, in this instance, it, the, there could be the possibility that even, so like, when you were talking earlier, Brian, about wanting to define the non-conformities and then going, like when you have a non-conformity and then going back and maybe a spot opens up in that facility. There's the possibility that the, the HOA could have their own definition of who gets the first unit that comes back up, right? Like, there's nothing preventing them from creating their own rules. So maybe, like, I understand that we would want to create some definition of that, maybe if they deem it necessary. But like, maybe we also, just throwing it out there, they could deal with that themselves. Because we can just say, one, or what, your percentage per your parent parcel, and then make them figure it out.
Who gets it?
Yeah, because I could see where multiple would go up at once, if that is the case. If it's a, if they hold it, then it goes non-conforming, then it goes back because enough open up again. I just don't want to define that if they could shake that out themselves. Does that make sense? Or is that, am I complicating?
No, I, I'm, I mean, that's a really interesting thought. I'm taking notes, so I'm going to sit, I'm going to sit with some of this.
I like that. I mean, it's not a guarantee that it would happen, but it is a possibility. And like, why would we want to try to? I don't want to make that decision. And I wouldn't, but I don't want us to make that decision or like the city. Like, I don't think that should be their responsibility.
Yeah, and I think, again, the, the emphasis to the planning commission is what direction do you want to go moving forward? Make that recommendation to the city commission. We'll, we'll figure out the nuts and bolts within the confines of the laws and protecting the city from liability and stuff like that and present that to them. And it's, it's unfortunate. We could spin our wheels for another six months on what's been done in the past, but there's a lot of protections on those non-conforming uses. Really, we should probably focus on where do you want to head in the future.
Okay. In order to try to make us just go in a better direction again, do we, does anyone else have other thoughts on the sheet? Do we have other thoughts on the site with the mappings? Do we have any other just generalized thoughts or questions that came up? Jackie?
On the, the last page of the, the redlined ordinance, where we're talking about the industrial district, I got very confused when I saw the reference to C2 district in there and I wondered if there, if that was, did you mean to mention C2 there or, I mean, or?
Can you tell me where you are?
So, that's, that is not a mistake. That's actually verbatim from it. So you've probably heard me referred to before. We have what is called pyramid zoning. Don't love it, uh, myself, but, so that's like, what's allowed in C1 is then allowed in C2 plus a few extra uses. And then what's allowed in C3 is what's allowed in C2, which is by default, what's also allowed in C1 plus a few extra choi- you know, so it gets very confusing. And because of that type of structuring, which, that was the way people did zoning, this higher arcal approach. But you can see where it's very easy, where a commission can make a change and not realize the invisible tentacles throughout the ordinance of where it still allows it. So we try to get away when we do amendments from redundancy, not repeating things throughout the ordinance because that's when you create inconsistencies because you don't catch it. What we try to do is say at once and then elsewhere in the ordinance, point back to where it's at so that we're always just reading the same lines and not having different versions in different sections of the ordinance, so.
So in this case, you are using C2 district uses as the baseline?
And that's what's in the ordinance already, yeah, so. Yeah, um, so everything you see in black in there, not bold, because that's just.
It's existing.
Is existing. The red is the, the change. We will redline it again to make the change about the, um, parcel, not building reference to further tighten that. And then hopefully get a robust definition on a hotel slash motel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Brian?
Okay, so before this goes to public hearing, I would like to see the building versus parcel, if you can address that language.
Mm-hmm.
And then I, which you, unless you brought up a question for the Planning Commission is do we want to move forward with what we have? Or do we want to consider, you know, affordable housing as an incentive for more short-term rentals? Or do we want to wait and see, let the City Commission flesh out their, because that's kind of a, that's kind of a step out of the box, excuse me, for us, for us. And you want to wait for the City Commission to kind of indicate their, their interest in incentives for affordable housing or before we, if, is there, yeah, that's an interesting question. I don't know if we want to dive into it because that could take us a couple of months.
So I have a recommendation on that. Mine would be, and I think that's a good point. I think the discussion and the policies and everything that are going to have to come related to that housing incentives that we talked about, if we're not starting that till August or July at the earliest, there, if we're not starting those conversations till then, likely the stuff's not going to be fully in place to the end of the calendar year. Between now and then, keep in mind, everyone who's getting a license is going to be grandfathered in. The longer you drag out your recommendation, the more grandfathered uses you're likely going to create.
Yeah.
So I would say, keep your focus on the percentages that you've been driving towards. Let's handle this one. We'll bring that one up when the time comes and incorporate it as is appropriate.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah. And we don't even know what the City Commission will do with this.
Correct.
They could deny it. They could modify. They could send it back to you, but I.
So it could draw out the process to the point where, like you were pointing out earlier anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a lot to consider. I mean, I think they're supportive of what the planning, just based on kind of what I heard last night. I didn't watch all of it, but I think they're supportive that the Planning Commission's exploring this. You know, I don't think that they indicated, and I'll let Mitch and Jackie say otherwise, that they're like thumbs up or thumbs down at this point. But, you know, it is in our plan, it's adopted and stuff like that. So it, it is fairly consistent there.
I think, I think moving forward, but including what Brian pointed out, like the parent parcel, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Yep. Those are easy changes. We can probably have those incorporated and sent to you for reference yet this week. The number of non-conforming uses, that's going to take a little more time. So we'll have to dig through that. And we're off on Friday, just FYI, so let's slow things down. You know, I think we talked about it last time. I mean, people are paying attention to the decisions of the City Commission, the Planning Commission. And sometimes when you propose things that are too restrictive, you get that gold rush, you know. We, we talked about that in our staff meeting today. There was a period of time where the city was exploring a tree ordinance. I think some of you recall that. And it was originally being proposed to be quite restrictive as far as removing trees. Well, as those conversations were occurring, the media was covering it, people started clearing their lots in preparation because they didn't want to be prohibited from doing it. Ultimately, that tree ordinance didn't really go anywhere. So all those trees got cut down for nothing. So it's like, you got to kind of be careful with that, that nuance a little bit.
Oh, it did pass, but a lot of the teeth got taken out and it was a lot less restrictive than people would have feared.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that's for the best because I think that Canton case would have probably nullified. There was a case, a similar tree ordinance in southeast Michigan that came about a year or two after the city was exploring those, theirs, and it got struck down by the judge. And so our, it was very similar to what was being proposed initially through that process. Good work, attorney.
Do you need anything else from us? I'm, it seems like we've talked about this extensively enough at multiple meetings that I think we're probably pretty set, although we did come up with some new things that are definitely interesting. Is it possible to come back with the couple of definitions that we brought up as well?
Yep. Yep, I have notes to myself on that. So we'll get started internally quite quickly on that. Those are pretty easy lifts.
Okay.
Like I said, as of now, the public hearing is scheduled for May 6th with the notice going out in Saturday's newspaper, I believe. Sunday's newspaper. We try to hit Sundays because they tend to get purchased more than others.
I was just actually going to ask you a question, Jackie. If you happen to hear back from the Aspire North person with their data, that would probably be really helpful for us to have by the public hearing.
Wonderful. I'm, I'm happy to share that. What's the, what's the best way for me to do that?
I would say send it to Katie and me, and then we'll distribute it to the whole Planning Commission.
Or not sending it stuff between us.
Yep, yep. Just send it to staff as a resource and we distribute, like we do other things.
And if we don't get it in, we don't get it in because they didn't get it to us in time, but still could be helpful for us to have before that meeting, to have reviewed.
Yep. Yeah, if we get it at any point before that, we'll send it along.
Yeah.
I guess my question for you all.
Oh, sorry. Jackie?
And, and my question was going to be, a public hearing on May the 6th, would we vote at the end of that session?
So that is up to the Planning Commission. Per the Zoning Enabling Act, you can't vote until a public hearing has been held. So it can be the same night. I don't want to say it has to be because you may hear something that was really intriguing. That's the purpose of the public hearing, that you said, you know, let's bring this back and, you know, explore that a little more. So there, you're not required to vote that night, but you can't vote until the close of the hearing. So you would be eligible to vote that night once the hearing's done.
Would the potential for a vote have to appear on the meeting agenda or would it?
No.
It wouldn't? Okay, that's a, that can be made in conference.
For sure.
But generally, there's a, there's a recommended motion.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's in the agenda, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So the public could see that a decision could be made, you know, but the Planning Commission, it's up to them. They don't have to make a decision at that time.
Would we be able to amend the proposed amendment at that time as well if, say, we get public comment that says something that we don't need to go and find more information, but okay, we need to make a correction here to.
Yeah, and what I would say is if it's somewhat minor, I'd be happy to kind of advise on if it's minor or significant or not. But if it's somewhat minor, I'd say, yeah, that's totally fine to incorporate changes on the fly at that meeting. If it's like a total shift from the approach that was noticed, I would recommend re-noticing a new public hearing because now you're proposing something radically different.
Yeah.
And the public should know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If somebody comes to us and says, on this specific category, it has, would have this effect that I don't think you're intending and we can change. Okay, it had been this number and we're changing it to this other number.
Yeah, that's.
That is one thing. If it's providing some context that, oh, we probably need to collect a lot more information on some issue, then that would be something to reschedule.
Yeah, and I mean, we're, we reviewed the notice. The notice speaks to the fact that the Planning Commission is looking to reduce the percentages. So, I mean, if you made those changes and that was in the spirit of what was noticed, I think that'd be fine. Now, like where I would have concern, let's say C2 is already 25% max, right? And that's what's, there's no changes proposed there. If from that meeting, you guys decided to make C2 0%, I would recommend a new public hearing because that's a, I mean, that's a total different shift for those who hold licenses already in those 25% buildings and they would probably need to know that something significant could impact their, their property.
Okay, noted.
The only other thing I was going to add here is we do have our wonderful city attorney here. And so if we have any questions for her, I just want to make sure you take advantage of the opportunity since she's here on preferably non-conforming uses and short-term rentals. But, you know, I'm not going to limit to you. You know, you got some other.
Oh, so now it's like.
I did a little bait and switch on her. I'm like, they're only going to ask non-conforming uses.
It's a quiz, it's a pop quiz.
Yeah.
I guess, just so that I can say something, I, just to get a sense of non-conformings across the state, like, is it a, it's probably a challenge everywhere. Everybody probably deals with non-conforming in entirely different ways. I just kind of wanted to get some context about like what you've heard about non-conforming and like.
On this subject, on short-term rentals?
Yeah, or just in general, like obviously they're probably headaches, but like people are probably pretty creative with their solutions. I don't, just your thoughts in general?
I mean, I think generally, non-conforming uses, you got to leave them alone.
Yeah.
So it, it's probably pretty uniform. You know, I, that's an interesting thing that I could like put on my listserv and ask all my city attorneys, like, how's everybody dealing with short-term rentals? It prob, you know, we're pretty, we're the, we're pretty much a hotspot. So, you know, I don't know if other cities are having the pressures that, the same pressures that we're having. You know, maybe around the coasts, they probably are, but you know, Kalamazoo might not be so worried about how many short-term rentals there are.
Fair.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, I would probably be interested in hearing responses just because, I don't know, you might get somebody from up north that had a different response than you thought they would have. I don't know. Yeah, it would be interesting.
Yeah, I can put it out there.
Thanks. Anyone else have questions for Lauren? Any questions for Lauren or Sean?
Zoning, property rights, any of the fun topics.
Trees, anything.
Trees. Horses.
Seeing none? I think we can probably move on to public comment. Wait, do I do public comment for the topic of discussion?
So, uh, the study sessions, we typically do the public comment.
We don't, correct. Okay, great. So I'm going to close the topic for discussion and we're going to move to public comment. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close public comment. And any last calls? Yeah, Jackie?
There was an offer to give a, a, a quick tour through the new dashboard.
Oh, you want me to fire that up a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we look at these maps quite a bit, so I wasn't sure if you were all familiar with them or not. So I did send that offer, the email, and I think it's firing up, maybe.
This is the vacation home rentals one, right?
Yep.
Okay. It's not the worst user experience.
That's always a great endorsement.
It's a good one. I should have said that.
Of course, as our GIS coordinator.
It's a good one.
Our staff liaison.
Oops.
Okay, so let me refresh this. This is the dashboard. It's not live. As you can see, it gets updated on the 20th each month because this is a reflection of the database that the clerk's office is keeping on their licenses, which monthly they provide to the GIS department. That then updates the database on the backend that's creating these visuals. So when you look at it, you see all the distribution of the licensed, these are the legal ones right now. Keep in mind, we don't have on here the illegal illicit ones. So you can see down at the bottom that they are categorized. You can put your cursor over every zoning district to see how many licensed dwelling units we have in each one. When you see this C4A with the A in parentheses, that is a conditionally rezoned property. So on our zoning map, that's the designation that the GIS department's using. If you see parentheses with an A, it's conditionally rezoned so that there are, it, it just signifies that there's other restrictions that have been voluntarily submitted and approved as part of that conditional rezone. This white category, Brian, I saw your email right beforehand, before coming into this meeting. I'll have to ask GIS. So there's probably some gap in the, or error in the database.
When you showed us, if we click on that, it just looks like they haven't been reassigned.
Yeah.
So it could be that that field is vacant or empty in the database.
Right.
And so it's just by default, throwing it into this category.
They're all in commercial districts along, I mean, next to other ones and everything from, you know, C4 to C3, so.
And so you can click on each one of these individually and it will make that change in the map. So you're only seeing the location of whichever district you clicked on. I'm going to go ahead and refresh to get us back there. Then when you zoom into the map, what you'll see is, you'll start to see a little bit more of a distribution. Now, in some cases, if we look right here, if I click on this, notice down in the bottom, there's 36 records. This is one of 36. This is a case where that dot on the map, that symbol, you have a bunch stacked up right there. So in other words, the dots on the building, but there's more than one unit in the building. And this bottom right-hand corner is how that is indicated to you. And then what you do is you use these buttons right here to toggle between each of the records. And so these are presented by license number. You can see who owns them, so on and so forth. The name, it says friendly name, that's a field that they keep, like in case you, I think you mentioned that Katie, name your unit. A lot of them come up with these catchy little names. Those will be indicated if they provided that in their application. So when I went through there, I think you will get occasionally a record that looks very different. This is just for the, this is the tax parcel information for this property, not the license information. So they're stacked on top of each other. So when you see that and it changes quite dramatically, just know that you're looking at something different. This is just what the zoning is, its acreage, things like that. So a little bit to consider there.
Sorry, I just scoffed it because the friendly names are hilarious.
Yeah.
But I immediately take back my remark. I think this is way better now that I know how to use it already.
Put it in my notes.
Yeah, you should. Thank you, Katie.
We're going to.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Take that sound bite and just put it on repeat in Jerry's office all the time. It's not the worst thing I've ever seen in my life. So, yeah, so what this is providing is all the property information for each of those licenses that you saw as well. So you got to kind of do a little cross-referencing. The owner name would match up with the license name. So there, it's just the way GIS illustrates all this spatially. It's all stacked in one location, so you got to kind of navigate through to see that a little bit. So you can go ahead and close that to get that map view back up again. And there's two tabs down at the bottom. So right here, you have tourist homes as well. So it functions very much the same, the districts where we allow them. These are primarily unlike vacation homes, these are in the residential districts because these are the, property owner has to have residency at that property and be present when they're renting it out. Now, we do have the low intensity and high intensity. We talked about these, I think maybe even in the fall, as another possible amendment. Ultimately, it was decided by Planning Commission, let's let this lie for now. It's focused on the vacation rentals. I think that was a wise decision. But our ordinance does have two classifications of tourist homes, the high intensity and the low intensity. The difference being how many night stays a year each one's allowed. So low intensity, I think, is limited to 84 night stays a year. So if I'm renting out two rooms, one night, that counts as two night stays. So it's how many rooms are rented, how many nights. The high intensity are allowed to exceed that 84 nights a year. The caveat there is they have to be separated, I think, 1,000 feet apart from one another. So this tan line that you see around the red dot is the 1,000-foot buffer. So you can have them exist, you know, the, the tan lines can overlap, but I can't have two dots inside one 1,000-foot buffer. So that is the limitation there. And as you can see, we don't have a lot of those. This was brought up early on because again, it's one of those ordinances that is a little hard to enforce. You know, people are, they're supposed to keep a guestbook, you know, they don't have to present it to us. I guess if there was a challenge or a complaint, we could request it to see if they're in compliance, probably go as far as subpoena it if it was necessary. But we haven't run into that yet. We haven't had complaints on these. It's, it is pretty amazing how having the owner on site eliminates a lot of problems and it's still serving its intended purpose. It's a primary residence. And we have talked earlier on that, you know, compared to some of our neighboring jurisdictions, our rental units, since we don't allow them in the residential districts, they tend to mostly be condos and they tend to be small units. So those typically are smaller parties, which tend to be less of a nuisance. Working, having worked previously in a surrounding jurisdiction where you have land and big houses and waterfront, that's where you tend to run into more of the nuisance issues because people are packing in 12, 15 people and frankly, having a party all weekend. We don't run into those problems as much in the city, but we have other problems, namely severe lack of housing. So, all right. I mean, that's just basically the gist on it, but I wanted to make sure you all were able to understand. And if you, I think you might, maybe these aren't live. Yeah, so similarly, you can click on some of these and get some data. Question from you, Jackie?
Can you recommend a source for what is the most efficient way to get our arms around what other, other communities, say, within Grand Traverse, Leland, et cetera, neighboring counties have in terms of short-term? neighboring counties have in terms of short-term rental regulations, where they, where they stand currently? What's, what's the best way to get smart about that?
Ask Aspire North, they keep their, on their website.
I would say.
Not for realtors.
Yeah, I would say Aspire North, and I would probably follow up with Katie Burdado from the Michigan Short-Term Rental Association. They're kind of an advocacy group, so they have kind of a lot of that information. I would just say that, from my experience, having looked through what other communities are doing drafting ordinances, you're going to see a great range of diversity. And that's kind of the beauty of Michigan. We allow local control. So every community has found a, a method that works best for their context. So, you know, that's why we get a lot of heartburn when we hear the state talk about preemption and taking away that local control, because every community's different. And admittedly, we would be one of those communities probably most negatively impacted by that loss, as was Sedona. Because again, another high tourist location, and that's where the, one of the legislature slaters, we talked about this today as well, who was a huge advocate for that bill that took away local control, has since been on a national roadshow being like, don't make the mistake we made. Like, we, we opened a box that we can't close anymore. And that's why, since the state took away all the local control, they're having to use taxpayer money to buy that use back, which isn't a great use of taxpayer money. You know, the state kind of put them in that position. And when I was reading articles about it, I mean, whole residential blocks were getting bought and razed in Sedona. And so that's, that's what we want to not have happen here. So to Lauren's point, since we are a hotspot, and the legislature looks at us, we, we have to kind of balance that. If, I would not recommend outright prohibiting them here in the city, because that's going to kick in legislative action.
You'd have a reaction.
You'd have a reaction that you probably don't want. And I, I still remember this 10 years out, there was a township supervisor in the thumb. He was talking about wind, it was wind generation. And he's like, if you, if it's a legal use, find a way to regulate it in your community. Otherwise, the state's going to come in and take away that control. And that's just always sat with me. It's like, yep, let's find out what solution works for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we have already heard from at least one developer that is very interested in this and these restrictions. And I know that if that developer, who is often attending our meetings, has that stance, I would imagine other people have that stance as well. So, anything else from the group? Otherwise, we're adjourned. Thank you.
All right, see you guys in May.
Thank you, Jackie. I entirely forgot about the presentation.